For these people who are going to end up.
Like to call the order of the January 12, 2022 Spring Row Board of Education and organizational meeting. Let's see if we need to do this. Oh, we've got swearing in first, sorry.
Yeah, I'm gonna, okay, now we'll go ahead and spread it.
Got it.
So we'll come over like here. You need extra room. Careful for this turkey. Okay, you can get in here so that they can see you. All right, ready? All right. The Charles Anderson, Andrew Good, and Stuckey solemnly swear or affirm that he will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of America, and that he will faithfully and adversely discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Spring Row Community City School District for and for the time to the best of your ability and to report to the laws and laws of that year after to be enacted during your particular set office and until your successor is elected.
I do read due.
Yes. Even though it's on video, I do want to put it inside of the. Thank you, guys.
Okay, item one point three is roll call whenever you're ready.
Anderson?
Here.
Fab?
Here.
Stuckey?
Here.
Bellage?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Okay, item one point four is the pledge.
Deget to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two point one is election of the board president and um now we need to open nominations for board president. I'll nominate Dave Stuckey for president.
Second.
And so this is for the approval to elect Dave Stuckey as president of the Spring Row Community City School District Board of Education for calendar year 2022. Okay, any other nominations before we close? The nominations. Okay.
So nominations are.
Nominations are closed.
So then you're requesting approval to elect Dave Stuckey as president of the Spring Row Community City School District. So we'll do a move.
Can I have the motion without a request?
So moved.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Stuckey.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. President.
Congratulations.
We want to thank you.
You can say your thoughts as well. Change it next to you.
Does it work? So now we do the.
Vice President.
Open nominations. We're at item two point two.
Two point two. Do we have any nominations for vice president of the Board of Education?
I'll nominate Jamie Bellage for vice president.
Second.
You said second?
Charles.
Charles. Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
So we'll do the approval to elect Jamie Bellage as the vice president of the Board of Education.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Tom Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Stuckey.
Good?
Yes.
Uh, two point four is approval of the December.
Yeah, two point. Thomas, send the mail back.
Two point three adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Two point four is approval of the December eighth meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Um, Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Two point five is establishing the meeting dates, times, and places for the Board of Education meetings. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second. Charles, second.
Did you guys notice too on the establishing the meeting dates, I did make the June twenty seventh board meeting for eight AM on the Monday. That's strictly for our financials that are required to be counted out by the thirty and we're gonna have limited staff at that meeting, so it'll just be those financials. Just wanted you guys to make sure you saw that it was at eight AM.
And then you need to get that approved by the thirtieth way so you can take yourself a little bit of.
Move it, roll call.
Um, Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Three point one, extend board member appointments to board committees and realign those committees to fiscal year instead of calendar year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah. So I was trying to get to the end of this a little bit earlier today, so it sounds like we're going to, for these three committees, continue on with the board members that are currently on those three committees, but because we're looking at our policy later, it is critical, especially for these three committees, that we have two board members there, so that if Charles, let's say, for business advisory wasn't able to attend, he would just reach out to one of us to make sure that we have two or three hundred days.
Correct.
Yeah, well, yes and no. So the policy only has traditionally had one, and I just realized this, but I think that's okay because and that may be something we want to consider in the future, because back to the core discussion, it's based on how many are appointed to the committee. So it may actually make more sense to do that. I don't know if that's something we want to consider in the future, but I mean, I think for extending this through June, like we talked about, just to get us onto the academic calendar is fine, but it may make sense just to cut down the volume and then we don't have the issue of finding numbers to ensure that we've got quorum and then.
I agree.
It may just make our everyone's lives easier to handle there.
Dan, I think the actual policy just said no more than two. So if you would be one, that's fine.
So a second board member could attend, could a second board member participate if they chose to? If we only appointed one, if the policy says no more than two?
Well, if you're not appointed, you're not on the committee, so that's where we would need to get into like the public participation, because I think technically you're going to a committee where you're not on the committee versus if you're appointed, you're actually technically presiding officer of that committee.
Okay.
So that's where we probably need to analyze things out later on.
Okay, so we'll look at that change in August, so.
It's a record for, yeah, for, it's a recognition. I mean, it's not like a game center.
I agree, I agree. So for these, this is just the same as what we had last year to get us onto our new rotation to follow the school year, which I think makes a lot more sense with our committees.
I had a question I asked Mr. Hook this morning, now that his committees, like I was there for the district parent council meeting, and I thought I read somewhere where we're not supposed to, not supposed to go, is that?
That's what we're gonna talk about on.
That's another section because of what Eric said. Okay. Okay. But until then.
Yeah, it's, it's fine. I mean, you didn't, it's just something.
Scott wouldn't let me talk today.
He does job.
Okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Four point one, approval to authorize the treasurer to request the advance.
Yeah, three point two.
Oh, I turned the page. Three point two, appointment of board members to public records access training and.
Good one?
Yeah.
Hello?
You're welcome.
Do we need a motion or?
Yes.
Fucking motions or accept? There you go.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion because you might back out, so roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Now four one, approval to authorize the treasurer to request the advance of property tax revenue from the Warren and Montgomery County auditors for all amounts available. Is there a motion?
We'll go all the way down to four point six.
Whole thing, okay.
Yeah.
Four two, approval of membership renewal with the Spring Row Chamber of Commerce. Four three is approval of membership to OSBA. Four four, approval to establish board service fund for 2022 according to the ORC section three three one five point one five in the amount of $20,000 and to authorize reimbursement of full expenses to the Board of Education members for authorized activities upon presentation of proper receipts. Four point five, approval to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to attend seminars and meetings that are beneficial to them as representatives of the school district during 2022 within limits of board appropriated funds, not to exceed 5,000 each, without approval of the Board of Education. And then four six? That's it there, okay.
Yes.
So we need to approve items four point one through four point five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion?
For four point five, thank you for adding the amounts in there, and I think if there's ever a training or something, I don't think our, my intention of requesting an amount in there is not to limit. If there is a professional training or something that we need, if you feel the need to attend, I just would like to see it brought to the board just so that we're aware. So just know that if there is something, and maybe there is through these changing times, that would require some additional training, it's not to limit it, it's just to so that we're aware additional training is needed.
Think that's why you added that, right? Anything else to discuss? Roll call, please.
Um, Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Five point one, approval to establish January eleven, 2023 as the organizational meeting of 2023.
So moved.
Bug? Is that the only one for that?
Yeah, for that.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Six point one, anybody from the education, Spring Row Educational?
Up here.
Okay, yeah.
I have nothing to say.
That concludes my announcement.
Well, I don't have anything to say now, I'll go out.
Okay. Six two is the Classified Employees Association. Public participation pre-arranged, I don't believe there was any, I mean, there. Public participation on any agenda item, is that right?
A work session.
Work session.
This is a business. Yeah, business. Any business agenda.
Okay, business agenda. The work session, public participation, I think what we've done there is that we let them ask questions after we're done with the. You want me to read that whole?
Yeah, we can just go to seven point two.
Seven point two, revision to the 2023, 2023 school calendar, Mr. Hook?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stuckey, members of the board. In your pack there, you have an updated 22, 23 school calendar. Met a couple of times with the union representatives and we talked about just some possible, well, started off as possible ideas to adjust the calendar. Nothing dramatic, but and it's still the same number of days, and that's the most, I want to make sure everybody understands, not like we're cutting any days. So with that, the changes is to extend Thanksgiving break to include Monday and Tuesday. And that means we have to gain back two, two days on the calendar to make it a wash. Those two days would be the would be the Monday after spring break as well as the last school day, instead of being on a Wednesday, will now be on a Thursday. Doesn't end, it's still our Memorial Day, so it really relatively does nothing for that. The other piece on here, and it's just kind of part of it, it came about, I think, because we let, we cut first semester off prior to Christmas break, so again, speaking with the union, I think it was, it made sense to take our work day, which was scheduled for March tenth, and move the work day to January second. And then we would have the school day on Friday the tenth, instead of, you know, we just moved the work day so that teachers could prepare for the second semester, it's a, just made sense. So that's it, that's all the change we wanted to.
Is there a motion to accept seven?
That's just working right now. You want me to just keep her on going?
Yeah, there any?
I actually just, oh, sorry. I was gonna say, so just, just for clarity, saying like moving that work date to the second, you've actually quasi extended Christmas break by a day for the kids, and then we're just not gonna have a no school day.
Correct, but it's a teacher work day.
Right.
Correct, and the kids, instead of they get off that, they come back on.
Yeah.
Which is the end of the third quarter.
I think this is a great decision. I think that, I mean, hopefully, for God, we're not in this situation next year, but I, from what I was hearing, there was so much exhaustion at that point, and having a full week break during that point, and even during non full year, so I remember when I taught, that was a really exhausting period, so to have a full week there, I think, I'd like to move to, as long as I'm on the board, I would propose doing this every year. I think having that full week is a great thing for staff, and it's great for families to be able to take a full week away during kind of like a fall break, but it's naturally gonna fit with Thanksgiving. I think this is a great choice.
Like you said, in, in teaching, there are always a number of students, families that left on that Monday or Tuesday. I probably would too if I were teaching.
Yeah.
It's probably, we can stick with it, that would be good.
Yeah.
Probably in a couple of months, we'll be bringing the next years anyways, so.
Seven three?
Seven three, just FYI, the winter guard, out of state trip to Indianapolis. No days of school or missed, transportation is in a school bus, it'll be, this is paid, you can buy their boosters. There was a question earlier about number of people in the, in the rooms, I believe they've budgeted for four people per room. So it's about 20 performers, five staff. That's gonna be in, in February.
I have a question around that. Considering the state of where we are, that was my question earlier around how many students per room, would we be able to, since it's not that many students and not that many rooms, in order to make it a safer place for the students that are staying, would we be able to use some COVID funds to only put two per room? So they would not be having to prevent, and with COVID now, feels like that would be a safer, putting them at less risk, having two per room as opposed to four per room. And we're only talking, if we have 20 students, five rooms probably, an additional five rooms if they hotel in that room. And you're the organizer, do you know, is that usually a tasking thing, would that even be an option if this was an option?
I think we're, I think the students are paying for the rooms, the district is paying for rooms.
That's what I'm saying, could we help out though in supporting this by using some COVID funds to help make it so that they're able to go, but they're not having as many? I know we're not now.
I would have to look at the qualifications. I do worry of all of the other trips that happen similar to this, that, that might be much larger trips, that we could end up with a lot of, we could be opening ourselves up to having to be back for everybody, and I don't know what the qualifications would allow on that.
Spatial circumstances.
Yeah.
I can edit our numbers right now.
We got two issues. Okay, the other issue that maybe it's not, but I don't know how packed the hotels are gonna be in Indianapolis during that time. Kind of like bands in America, I don't know if you could.
Right.
Span the number of room requests. I just don't know. We'll look into it. We'll look into it.
Yeah, we can look into it. I believe the rooms are available.
So.
Yeah, we can look into it. I need to look at the qualifications, the COVID dollars, if that's something that we would be allowed to use the board.
I think it's worth exploring.
It's worth exploring. I had the same thought about, because I know we've heard some other out of state trips and prior meetings, and I don't remember all of the dates, but I have the same sort of question about consistency, but what situation will be and what those sort of trips are happening, but I think I just have to be part of the, part of the conversation as well.
Are there other trips? When does this?
I think it's around twelve.
Are there other trips in February? So that's into March. I guess I'd like to look at, if there's other February trips, how many trips have we approved that have overnights that have four kids per room? It would just, I'd like to see budget, budgetarily, what would it, what impact would it have for us to provide some funding if it allowed it? To, we're really put two kids per room to maybe this trip and anything else in February, just so we can see, hopefully, at that point, our numbers are heading back in the right direction.
Well, definitely look, and if it's something that we could do, then we have our meeting at the end of this month that we could approve and we could move forward knowing that it'll be on. So let me check first on the qualifications, I can check tomorrow and then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to be here. Congratulations, Mr. President. Welcome back. Tonight I bring to you all, again, an extra attempt to try to secure more personnel so that we can keep school running. Tara and I sat down last week, I thought, and looked at our pay rates for substitute on the classified side of the world, and they were very, very low, a lot of them in the nine dollar, nine fifty range. And we are not taking them, you know, way up, but we're trying in different ways to attract more people to come and sub, especially educational systems. That hits us hard when they call in, that's been a big thing this week for sure. Also on here, you'll see that we did raise our sub teacher rate to a hundred and twenty five dollars a day, which I believe is the highest in Warren County.
We're either at or.
Above all the other districts, so hopefully.
But everyone else is changing there, so we definitely need to do something.
We need to do something, because we were at a hundred. So while we are changing these, we actually need people to step up and do the work. So we might not obtain anything from it. But it's not gonna break the bank. We, we looked at each position and kind of the responsibility factor, and while these are definitely not what you're gonna make at Starbucks or at Target, we're trying to at least do something.
Well, for everyone's context, on January first, Ohio's wage went up by 50 cents to nine dollars and 30 cents, so we're fighting the floor anyway, so I think wait for anybody, every, every year, there's an increase. We're probably gonna do this analysis, because otherwise, we're literally against the, the Ohio's wage rate, so.
We did, you know, you all signed the resolution to allow us to employ substitute teachers that did not hold a bachelor's degree. Twenty one, so far we've had 21 inquiries and eight people have completed the process, so it's good.
Now it's basically background checking, right?
And going to the cog and doing paperwork and.
Yeah.
A little class on, you know, classroom management and stuff.
What do the, so our sub paid teachers cover?
So we are raising it to 25 a day.
Oh, teachers, if they cover a class?
Oh, internal coverage? It's our 31, 27 an hour, yeah. Yes, we have been doing that a lot.
It's bachelor zero, I'm at three, four, classroom.
Yes, that part of our budget will be significantly higher this year.
Is there a, a delay in getting fingerprints and when they actually are applying and are actually able to get in the classroom? Right now, though, it's, it's pretty quick.
Okay, thank you. Seven point five, committee reports, Mr. Hook, Scott?
Um, yes. DNI committee formed from December fifteenth. Again, just to jump in, you know, with Bellage and that, basically discuss where to go from here, what some of the thoughts in terms of the top five potential ideas, thoughts that go into consideration and implementation within the strategic plan. Part of that was one, you know, looking at data in terms of ethnicities, et cetera, and really trying to build on our, you know, our recruitment abilities in terms of getting more, getting high quality authenticity and race within our candidate pool. Also looking at surveying staff, trying to learn a little bit more, getting better gauge on maybe their, their thoughts and ideas as a break, you know, through a DNI lens. What do they believe we're missing, what do we believe we're doing right, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing had to do, we talked about climate and culture, but again, the thoughts of survey, at least our secondary students, our older kids, and see what they think, what do they think the environment's like, and try to see if we can glean information from them as well. Likely might need some help with, with that kind of the survey to be able to ask the right questions, you know, to get information that's usable that we can give to administration and for possible implementation, et cetera. Also want to look at, we talked before about, these are in addition to, of course, the Bureau of Master Program, so this is more about other thoughts. We had, you know, what were the other things that we were looking at, and we wanted to be able to look at process to make sure that we're just evaluating our textbooks, not that our textbooks are. Not that our textbooks are very good. We have a high quality, high operating curriculum department, but just to see. And it's, and it's happening. You're seeing a more diverse lens, you know, within our textbooks that are out there right now. Through the Brenner's Hall, through the, you know, those anyway. But we want to make sure that we are, are looking at those. So it's just not the old Jack and Jill books, you know, from days gone by. Possibilities of any electives in a, in a high school setting. That's about the only place we do have electives. We do have some in the junior high, but not much. So again, looking at libraries, we have availability for students that, that choose to have some other readings. We also talked about in the community, you know, holding a DNI forum. You know, maybe it's, maybe it's annual. I don't know. It might be an annual, you know, just we threw out that idea. I think it's always good to, to throw it open to people and to everybody. And maybe we do it off campus. I don't know. We haven't got that far with it, but just the idea of having a forum to also hear from our community, see what they think. So a lot of just discussion on those kinds of things. And we went over like, I think the other things we went over is the, kind of the timeframe on the strategic plan. And so was, was part of that discussion, but that was the major part of the discussion. If I had anything else.
Did the city do something?
To, to maintain this combination of people and, right, and there's our organizations. Go ahead.
Yeah, just practically, again, like you said, Mr. Hook, we had a lot of discussion about some of the other ideas that just have been surfaced. And so the intent was to sort of get groups' thoughts on where they thought the prioritization of those sorts of things ought to fall. And I'm sure this probably say there's a lot of, you know, trying to survey our staff and students. There's some ideas through that. Like the intent was then to sort of pass those over to the admin now as part of the strategic planning process so that they can kind of take those and think to those who are the ones that will, you know, sort of operationalize any of those particular ideas. So this was just a chance for us to get away on the things that, that they felt were, were important, you know, to really sort of assist the administrations they were entering in that strategic planning process. So I thought it was a good, a good conversation and a lot of good ideas shared and, and thought it was productive and hopefully gave the administration a good start.
And the other thing was, we, we were talking through with the ambassador program, hopefully that we could take, I think, the month of January to work through. I think Mr. Hook sent an email to see who would be interested in December and to look in the month of January building wise to make sure we have representation and hopefully in every building and to move forward with that. This, this year, because, you know, we're in the pilot year, they would kind of start it off this year and then follow it through next year. So this would just be the first year to kind of kick it off and then they would continue on through next year. So that's something else that's continuing to move forward. Hopefully we'll have those people decided in the next. Would you think that would be happening the next month or so, Mr. Hook?
Yeah, I think so. We've actually got, it's pretty good. I want to send out another email. I got to be honest with you. It just thinks of, there's been a lot going, but I've had quite a few responses so far. We had one, Monday had one principal's meeting, which I, that was going to be part of it, but it ended up being a COVID discussion and how to manage the, the week. So we didn't get to it, but we will, because I also want to hear from them, who they also think is, could be good leaders. Maybe just didn't apply, didn't want to, you know, with a little encouragement, they might think might be really good at that role. Because the idea is that group become the train to trainer kind of type of model. So yeah, I, I think, I think a month will be pretty, pretty close. I agree with that. We'll narrow down.
Great, continue.
And I know we talked about this, I think it was December, the first day of the board session. And I want to make sure that as this committee has the idea, you know, kind of the ideation stage and it goes to Mr. Hook. I mean, I think it's really important for us to work to see those ideas through the lens of our entire strategic planning process because, you know, well, I think there's good work being done here certainly. These ideas will compete with the rest of the strategic planning process and we need to prioritize everything, you know, on a level of, I guess, for like a better term, so that we can pick and choose, you know, where we go. Because obviously many of these things are going to require resources and I think it's important for us to, you know, not necessarily wade these through without looking at the context of everything else we want to do. So I know we talked about that, but I think it's.
Right. And we also know DNI sits within our strategic plan. And so we talked about this being pretty low hanging fruit of.
Yeah, the ambassador, yeah. But I think again, we, we want to, we should, that every idea is a full board, you know, as we talk through our strategic planning process. That's, that's all I'm saying. Thanks.
Mr. Marshall?
Where President, members of the board. We had our first district parent council meeting today of the school year. So we had several new members. So we just kind of discussed the process of district parent council, the goals, kind of the things we'll be doing as we meet throughout the year. And then we had Ms. Cook and her team present about their department, gave curriculum updates regarding staffing, elementary and secondary, as well as going into technology updates and legislative updates. So those minutes will be posted, the presentation will be posted online. And we meet again February 9th. Any questions?
Would you like to also move this committee to be on in the school year? It just seems like it makes sense. Like if we have a sixth grade parent joining in January, they're not a sixth grade parent.
Yeah, I, I believe that was discussed, but given that we were just starting when this announced, we didn't want these members to be, then have to replace after six months. So I believe what we're doing is they're going to finish out the remainder of this school year and continue for the entire school year and then it'll recycle on, what is that, 23? At the end of 23 school year.
Can we just make sure that we do have representation in case of a parent rotates through and doesn't have a kid at school anymore like SI? That we do have a parent, because usually you have parents with multiple children. So probably there's going to be overlap, but just wanting to make sure that there are representatives from each building.
I think, I think we kind of add this every year because we've always been on the calendar year. So hypothetically, we kind of always have.
We used to do DPC on this.
Oh, is it on this year? When did we convert to the calendar?
I don't know. Because I.
My entire time on the board, I think it's been calendar.
I don't know.
But I guess, yeah, your point, like SI, we've always kind of lost the SI people.
Well, it can be your other schools too, you know, as you're like, I have a first grader that's moving on and.
I think it's long.
Yeah, since, since I've been on it, I know it's always been set up as school year. And that's kind of the way it was passed off to me. It was through school year and that's just how we kept it. But yeah, SI is always one because you're only there one year. If they only have one kid, you know, going into the building at that time. But we do, I get with the principals every school year at the start of the year and we go over, you know, selections of parents for that. And we try to make sure that we have at least two if we can get it based on people who are available from each building, two parents.
So you're saying it does go to the school?
School year.
Oh, I thought you were saying this was the first meeting.
This was the first meeting. We got a late start this year, just given everything going on as far as availability. So yeah.
Okay. We just didn't start it yet. Okay.
Typically it'll start usually in October. I leave August and September alone. It'll start in October. But yeah, they start this year.
Board assignments must have been out of order now. We must have, because we always.
Board assignments.
Order.
Yes, board assignments have.
So we.
Correct. Any other questions? Thank you.
Stacy?
Oh, okay. Item 8.1 is the.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Discussion of any other business to, just keep doing that. Okay, go ahead.
I have item 8.1, which is the approval of the tax budget that I did for, for the organizational meeting. And then item 8.2 is that approval of the revised amounts and rates and which is going to be the change from the bottom entirely. It went from five mils down to three mils and then the addition of the PI levy. And so that's where I'm revising those.
Okay. And 8.3 is zero to approve items 8.1 and 2. Is there a motion?
So moved. I'm sorry.
How about, Chuck? Any discussion? Hold on, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Tab? Stuckey?
Epstein?
Apelage?
Yes.
Yes.
Back to Mr. Hook.
9.1 is just first reading. It's on committees, it's policies 0155. It's a, in your documents, basically this is what changes, I think, adjustments that our legal counsel shared with the board. So it's, it's on a reading. It may change between now and next. I think you guys got to have some discussion. This basically she tried to really delineate between a board committee versus, or a subcommittee versus a district which operates as a superintendent's committee. So that's a, therefore a first reading. Keep going?
Yep. Well, just a question on this one. Because I know we discussed some of this in the board session. I think the end of the day, there's some things around, I don't know what to call it, guidelines, if you will, for like participation. Are we going to try and incorporate that?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a very good point. So this is verbatim as we got from there, our district attorney. So I thought it was important to put this out and here's the first reading because this is exactly what our attorney provided us. That being said, I think we need to continue to make adjustments to it, but I think using, this is our new jumping off point because I think the last first reading we had, wasn't a member maybe, a couple off the agenda. So yeah, and I know that Aaron had provided guidance in that letter that I distributed to the board as well. And that's where I think there's some, you know, additional pieces that we probably want to pick up and potentially incorporate in this. So, you know, this is more of a, I guess, a mild merger, if you will, than this is the do start point for us. I think we still have adjustments we likely need to make to it. But again, I think it's good to pick this up from here as opposed to, you know, we edited, unedited, unedited our last policy and they kind of got awareness.
So then would the intent be that we like sort of send any of that feedback and so we can sort of be helpful?
Yeah.
Put it for like another first reading, like amended program?
The timing worked against us and we got this pretty late. We were expecting to get this before Christmas and we got it, or a day ago, including pretty lengthy looking in. So that's kind of the issue is I don't, we just flat out didn't have enough time to kind of work on this before this meeting. So again, this is just to have out here in public record, but again, we have work to do and.
If you're not where, it's where it needs to be by a second reading, you can always tell.
Yeah. Just so you have that. I fully expect there to be another first reading with our final, agreed upon version, but we're just not there yet. So that's how we'll go on next.
So what are the next steps that you want us, I guess, Dave, Dave, or whoever, that? There's a lot to take in here.
Yes.
The letter from Aaron was, it's a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot to try to understand what it is that is best to, the best way to handle this.
So my thought is to take this 0155 that she gave us and then try to kind of graft it in pieces of the last version that he did prior to our guidance and see if we can marry those up without kind of running a vowel of the guidance she gave us in her separate letter. I'm happy to do that as I've been kind of, kind of doing that all along. Again, the timing just worked against us in terms of actually having a ready first meeting. I think it's very realistic by, we're two weeks out from the next one. I think between then and now, we probably have a, put in another first reading and get our acceptance of my draft and then go on from there. I think these types of policies are almost impossible to do in a context like this. I think we're literally cutting and pasting stuff out and it just, you know. So I, unless somebody's supposed to, I would take that and, you know, get it out to the rest of the board between now and next meeting. Kind of determine if we want to add it back to the agenda.
And what we're looking, we're looking at the difference between the committees that are required by ORC code, the three committees, business advisory, curriculum and policy versus every other committee that we have. And how are we going to treat those ORC code? There's certain things that we have to do. The other ones, there's not. But we need to make sure that, and that's where we got guidance from Aaron?
Yep.
So Dan, you're going to take this?
I will take this. And like I said, I think between now and the next meeting, we've got, I kind of have a sketch in my mind, so I just need to go around paper and get it back up everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And then 9.2 is a, will be second reading of our public participation in board meetings. The major difference in this, I believe it's highlighted here as well, is we reduced it from three, three days to your want to speak in public at the meeting, prearranged. We lowered that to two days. So just, that's one change. So probably it'll end up being like, you know, we have to receive it like four o'clock or five o'clock or something like that on Mondays, on a typical Wednesday instead of the Friday. So that was one change. The other one is, is have the ability to, you want to speak on a published agenda item, also have a sign in sheet that we'll make available, which must include your name, address, you know, appropriate what agenda item type that you're going to speak on that way. If you're concerned about saying, you know, your, exactly where you live, that you, okay, we got a little bit of protection, but we have to have that. We need to, to, to follow our policy. So that's, those are the main changes. Otherwise it's probably the same.
Give a little background because this one's a little stale too. So the impetus for this was Neola gave us an updated policy several months ago and it was actually pretty straight. So what we've actually done beyond that, which if you look at the materials, it's the highlights. So the green is the new Neola language, the green text. The highlighted yellow is where we as the board have gotten and essentially loosened Neola's language. For instance, prior notice of two days instead of three days, like Larry mentioned, not having to state your address in public. Instead you can provide that privately for, you know, primacy sake. And then the rest of it, I believe is just some cleanup. Yeah. So this is actually, you know, for lack of a better term, looser than what Neola provided, but it's in the context and in the spirit of how we've conducted our board meetings for many years. So I think it's, you know, it starts to be purposeless one. Again, it pretty much carries on how we've conducted board meetings, but at the same time, it raises us up to kind of date with Neola where I think the last version we had was 11 years old. It's not revisionated, so this one needed tightening up anyway.
To your point, I just. To your point, I just, yeah, I think you kind of covered this, this re-reading. Really, it effectively hasn't changed the opportunity for public to participate in meetings at all. There's still the prearranged, the ability to speak on any agenda, I don't know that that's in the business or the work session, you're just signing in so that you're not having to state your address publicly, but effectively, public still has the same opportunities to participate.
Yep, exactly right.
Just making sure that's clearly included.
Tell people to understand is where will it be located? And I mean, is somebody gonna be there to?
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Go ahead and do that.
I'll wait, right before the meeting starts, I'll go grab it, and I'll have it over here. If anyone's like, if anyone comes in late and notices that they're coming in, we can take them, speak they can.
Or big key like this, too. And I guess that's the part, if you feel that, if there is a chance to speak, I guess you would just be signing in ahead of the time. You don't have to do that, it just.
Call the names, and, um.
Well, no, they just have to go up.
No, I think they would go up as long as they were on that sheet, and we have their addresses, it's okay.
And I can always wait until right before we get to public participation session, which means most people would be here already, and then I could grab it there.
They'll probably just be a little bit.
It's not the big key, it's just a.
It'll be a plug in your first.
Remind people, come in.
Okay. Okay.
Calendar nine point three.
And then now, nine point three is the, we want the approval for the calendar that we discussed, the work session. Nine point four was also the approval for the winter guard off state trip. Bring this to nine point five.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve items nine, two through nine, four?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Oh, roll call.
I don't have any further discussion on that, but I had it earlier, and you may have asked for an update just on COVID situation, and it was gonna be during the superintendent updates. So is that gonna be later? I just don't see that.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna do it at the end here, twelve, one, around twelve, one, if you want me to.
I just want to make sure.
It's up to you guys.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Um, Anderson?
Yes.
Shad? Yes. Stuckey? Malachi? Good.
Yes.
Ms. K, or, no, systems? This one, uh.
I present to you ten point one, the personnel reports for December, January. And ten point two is the approval for the revised substitute rates.
So we need a motion for ten, one, and ten, two, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Shad? Yes. Stuckey? Malachi? Good.
Yes.
And then ten point four is the athletic report for January.
Is there a motion to accept ten, two?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Shad? Yes.
Epstein?
Malachi? Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Record spatial reading.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am requesting a contract for a separate visibility placement for students.
Is there a motion to accept eleven, one?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Shad? Yes. Stuckey? Malachi? Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to talk about yours first there?
Oh, no. Well, first of all, let me address a couple of things. Certainly, I understand some of the confusion that was around some of the new protocols that nobody knew were coming until I received an email on January one from the Department of Health, Warren County Department of Health, who has a statutory authority over us. So we got this update from Duane Stansberry, and that this was coming out of the CDC, read through it for the first time, and go, this is not good. I don't know why this is why we're doing this. Nobody's, we had no discussion, no nothing. So Monday, I basically said, we need to meet with the health department to make sure we know what this all means. But meanwhile, the CDC posts it, which is kind of how they do things. They just post it out there, and, okay. Then midweek, the Ohio Department of Health posts another thing, taking part of that on Wednesday. And they had grabbed a diagram from Clark County combined health district, because they didn't put one on their own, they just borrowed one, which had some, kind of some errors in it. Plus, in Ohio, my quick first response was that we eliminated the mask to stay test to play option, because there was still no mention of that. So it was Wednesday or Thursday, the day after, we got an update from O D E. And again, we found out about it through a press conference. Nobody lets us know, and they posted, and, okay, this is supposed to be the gospel, so there's differences between that one to the CDC's. And so we had our meeting on Friday with the Warren County Department of Health, and tried to get as much clearance, or, and some of this you had to talk through, because it's still not perfect out there. But by and large, let me explain what the major differences are, okay? So if you have COVID, if you are, like, either have symptoms and/or you test positive, okay? By and large, and I'm gonna do a real quick paraphrase, you have to isolate for five days, okay? You may return to school on day six, provided to think you are fever free for 24 hours without medication, and your symptoms are getting better. Not eliminated, but getting better, then for the next five days at school, you have to wear a mask, okay? Except when you're actively eating. All right? So that's that one. Then they split it between exposed, if you are up to date on your vaccinations, and exposed, if you are not up to date on your vaccinations. For height, basically, for, for school age, children up through seventeen, that means you've had your two shots of Pfizer, or two shots of the Narna, and or a single shot of J and J. It does not mean you're boosted, you don't have to have a booster to be considered up to date, okay? If that's the case, okay? You can wear a mask around others for 10 days after your last exposure. So you're exposed on, whatever, Monday. About 10 days beyond that, you can be at school as long as you don't develop symptoms, as long as you don't develop fever. Okay? So it's almost like the mask to stay. It's almost like that, okay? So if you are exposed, and this is away from school, you do not have to test. You do not. None of them you have to test, and I had that, again, clarified in front of several people with the health department today. You're telling me we don't, we don't have to? Yes. Those are, if you feel sick, or you're worried, or whatever. But again, if you test, and it's positive, then you move to the isolation status. Then you gotta follow that protocol. All right? So back, if you're unvaccinated, then you're exposed at home. Unvaccinated, exposed at home, meaning anywhere other than the school. Okay? Then you have to stay at home for five days, okay? You can return on day six. Again, as long as you don't have symptoms. Fever, you can be at school then for the next five days, okay? Mask and stay has not changed. So exposure in school is, there's still a differential between exposed, out of school. Difference is now, when you're out of school, or you're fully vaccinated, or you're not. So it does create a little bit more, if that's a few questions to find. But that's, that is where it's at. It is on our website correctly. Now, confusion came because CDC put one thing out, O D H put something out twice. And then now, our Warren County Health Department does have it on our website. I don't want to sit here and say it was perfect, because they, again, used one of the graphics from a different county, and it's not perfect. But I got all those clarifications. Our definition and what our, our people have been told, and we will recommunicate to make sure everybody's back on the same page. Problem also is, we had people coming off of exposures in the first week when we didn't have, so they were under the old protocols. They got caught into that transition, going from the old protocols to the new protocols. We should be out of that effectively tomorrow, but, you know, the bottom of the bucket fell out today in terms of staff numbers in particular, which is the other piece. You know, if you can't operate, you can't operate, at the end of the day. So we were looking at Friday, because we knew, based on some of the people that were actually already called off, based on looking at how our projections were coming in, that we were gonna struggle Friday. Well, in about a two hour swing in time, Thursday went down the toilet in terms of numbers of staff and positive cases. So what does that look like? A lot, but we're not seeing anything different than anybody else is seeing. So I don't, it's just our reality, okay? So last week, all week, and again, most of this was coming from the holidays predominantly, the best you can determine. We had 156 positive cases, 36 staff. We're already at 173 as of the day, which is higher than the week's total. So my question became, can we even pull tomorrow off? That's why we were scrambling today, so. We get probably a whole lot other than making sure we got as much information out as fast as we could get it out, as accurately as we could get it out, so. And what's happened is, I don't want to say like a snow day, but almost the exact same time Franklin had to shut down, Wayne, Waynesville has shut down. Lebanon already had shut down a high school that are going remote all week, I believe, next week. Just because that building is crippled, whereas some of the others are not. Ours is pretty spread. I mean, so it's, I, I, the biggest worry, well, one of the biggest worries, one, there's several of them. I don't know if we can even serve food. We're just down to, we're down to nobody being able to do it. And then you run into federal laws when you're dealing with food service. It's a whole different animal in and of itself. But we're just, you know, that's all our principals are doing, it's all our nurses are doing. And so we, we just, at some point, this is, this is crazy. But again, then, in the same breath, then Monroe, Monroe went and did the same thing, they're down. Same with Hamilton City. And the list is going on and on, and I think it's not done. And I think we're just in the heat of the surge. Again, there are, you look at Middletown, you look at others, you know? You know, so if you can't operate, you can't operate, you know? We're not gonna run a study hall for 6,000 students. I get it, you know, there's nobody who wants to be in school more than I do. And I know our kids love it. I was heading to buildings all last week, and those kids that were, were there, just excited to be there. And so you could just see it, you know, and I just, you know. So we're gonna try to reignite again, and get it up, back up and running, and see if we can get some of our staff back. That's kind of where we're at, just.
So I've got a couple of questions around that. The first question is, it seems like you've got, like, if we're looking at a building, we've got transportation we're looking at, we've got food service, and then we have our staff around teaching, kind of, those are the three buckets that come to my, to my head. And I guess our other support around custodial, custodial in the outs, like Scott's areas. Do we have it, like, I'm hopeful that we have worked it through. So like, at the high school, Kyle has it broken down. So of those four areas, I guess I'm gonna count you out, because that's kind of more district wide, but of the three areas that do impact every building, it could look very different. Because we might be okay at Clear Creek, but at the high school, we're not. So I'm hopeful that if we have to close down buildings, we're closing down, I get it, right now, we're two, two days of everybody, and hopefully having a five day break. But that we can close down specific buildings for a day because of staff, because, let's say, we've got three buckets of things. If two buckets are okay, but one is not, I want our staff to know we're supporting that if that third bucket is not okay, we're not asking everybody to drop everything and be running help or skeleton. We will close down one building, and that, I feel like we need to communicate to families, be ready for this over the next few weeks, it might happen. But I feel like we've got to have that formula and that plan, and that our admin team knows if those, if two of, one or two of the buckets, or three of the buckets are not ready to go, then we, we support the closing of that building for that day. Do we have it broken down like that, so that we can make building wide decisions?
Not by a specific number. I don't know of anybody that does. I think everybody is doing what we're doing. We're checking, checking daily. Scott gets a quick update at the beginning of the day, sometimes in the evening, you know, if it's, that's, that's kind of what we've been getting. Principals are calling in, letting you know what kind of, what we're dealing with in terms of staffing. And then in the middle of the day, it just kind of, they call us. They, we've got a spreadsheet that they push up information into, so. It just depends, it also depends on, do we have the ability to send? I mean, we, a lot of people have been wearing a lot of different hats the last week and a half, so.
I don't want to lose staff because we're having to wear so many hats. I guess I'm seeing some other districts that are closing just a building at a time. I guess that's.
No, we can do that, absolutely, we can do that. But I don't sit here, and I'm not gonna tell you we have this formula if you get that, because I think it depends on, there's too many variables. I have to have confirmation from the boots on it, but yeah, absolutely. We can close an individual, individual building, just, just like we could on a calamity scenario. You can close an individual building.
Right, but like Jamie said, we're evaluating. Right, but like Jamie said, we're evaluating on a building level and we're communicating to our administration that we don't have to have everybody dropping everything to keep every building. We do want our kids in, in school, absolutely, we want our kids in school. But we can't, I feel like we could lose staff and staff could be out sick longer because we're, they're burning the candle at all ends because we're stretching it too far. Or we could be infecting children more because we're putting too many kids in a classroom because of missing staff. So those are the kind of things, I wanna make sure we're not driving Peter to paint, to paint Paul and then we're ending up having a bigger issue down the road.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's something you said that you're looking at. I think every school would be. The only thing maybe that would cause a problem is your transportation possibly. You know, and if, if one license pool gave run, nothing wrong, and I think we shut it down and all the other schools we open, they, that's what you're basically talking about.
Yeah. I think, do you think we need to look creatively or do we delay, you know, if a quarter of your drivers are out, do we have to delay? And we put out a one call that schools are on a little bit of a different rotation, your kids aren't gonna be able to go to school, but they're gonna get there a little bit differently today in order to adjust our route.
We've already done it, we've already talked about that. If we, we have a rotation, if we, if we're down and we can't run all routes, we don't just hit one group. We ran into that pretty early and said, okay, we need to fix that. So we kinda went through with Michelle and gone, okay, if we lost two, which two routes? We lost three. And we kinda put together a sequence if we lost those, that many. But knock on wood, we seem to be stabilizing in our, I don't wanna jinx it. Just start getting rubbing rabbits' lips and everything else right now. But you know, yes, we do, we do that constantly, so. You know, the biggest, biggest issue is, we can't get subs for most classified positions. That was the hardest hit. We are, last week, I think we were at a round of 50, low 50 fail rate, mid 50 fail rate. I think we got up to 60. Hey, we broke 60. So fail rate with teachers and subs and certainly those initially will also help us as we move, move forward. We, we just, we watch it constantly, that seems to be like a whore doing. You know, it's stressful on, on nurses. You know, we've tried to get them to understand, listen, you got families too, time to go home.
Those are the things that I know.
They're the people, but I.
People like that.
And we, we've had those conversations, so.
My other question is, when I was asking the questions, when we took away the mask mandate in November, we stated that we would be looking at the numbers and how they're trending. And when we're at 156 positive for students and 36 positive, last week in here, we're already at 176 and it's only Wednesday. Are we looking at potentially bringing masks back when we return on Tuesday? Cause I'm not sure how the numbers, how we couldn't say that this is a trend. And I, I agree, Charles, and I've had this conversation, we think this is only gonna last a couple of weeks, that it's gonna be this high trajectory, but this is not good. And I struggle looking at saying that this is expected and that we had re-masked last year, and yet there's no need for that when the numbers are looking like they are and they're continuing to. And we know the numbers are actually a lot higher than that, cause that's only school exposures. Or whatever those are. I know they're not the full numbers.
I mean, I think we also talked about though, adding another meeting if we were gonna re-implement a mandate.
Say again?
We had talked about having a meeting to discuss re-implementing a mandate, so I think we owe that community.
Sure. So this is where I'm just, I'm asking the first step, because this is the first meeting since the numbers skyrocketed.
Well, let me just share you a thought. You don't need, it's not looking for a comment, it's just that some of the things that I've looked at is, one thing I can tell you is that as each week, each month, this thing goes by, we learn more. I look back at the data from, I think, that I know you can argue that was a different variant or whatever. I'm just looking back at our, when we implemented in August because of that surge. Okay, that's why it was, all of a sudden this Delta, this Delta thing was like, oh my God, it's gonna shut us down. So at that point, there was no other, there was no mask to play, or mask to stay, or anything else for, for our elementary kids. And so when we implemented it, I look back at our statistics from, from September and October, those two months, and looked at the number of infections between high school, not high school, but secondary and K through six. And looked at those numbers and it was equal, which was interesting. And then I just, I looked at the following October and there was three infections different. So you're talking about over a two month period of time when we had the masks in versus those students that were optional, it was statistically no different. The other peculiar thing I was seeing was those districts in southwest Ohio, looked at a couple of, trying to see, was there this big difference? And it, there doesn't seem to be a difference. This thing seems to be running, and right now, you're getting the same levels of infections and percentages and things like that throughout south, you know, the schools that I'm seeing anyway, whether they're masked or not masked. So, you know, do I have the right answer? I don't know. I, I think so, but I don't, I can't guarantee it. That's a discussion I think you probably have to maybe have, if that's what you're truly thinking we need to do. But I'm not seeing the other pieces of this. In my mind is, okay, in Ohio, what's happening to kids when they leave this school? At 2:30 or 3:30, whatever they hit. Because, I don't know about you, but I've been to Kroger's and I've been to all these, you know, Walmart and everything. You know, what are we doing? I mean, infections up through Christmas, predominant, that we could tell, that we could tell, were predominantly from outside of the school environment. I think it's bleeding over a little bit this week. I think we had our first exposures that turned into positive. But again, I don't know, depends on incubation periods, et cetera, is it still from holidays or not? I don't know that. But unless you're controlling all the variables, then I'm not sure what you're controlling at all. And then the third piece of this is, in Ohio, you know, they're talking about, you know, N95s, you know, masks or surgical masks, three by surgical masks. You know, I'm going, okay, well, we can get some, we can get some of those maybe. But those aren't in this massive supply chain. I think we can get some, I think, you know, we've got some of those around that we've been using mainly on buses. You know, kids come on, here's your, here's your surgical mask, here's your surgical mask. You know, we've been giving those away like candy, so. It's just another piece of information, that's all I'm saying. I'm not taking good manner of never, just as I'm watching this whole thing unfold, I'm just seeing some trends that are just interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's building on what Mr. Hook said, and. I'm struggling, you know, I think sort of lots of people are, you know, I certainly understand. You know, Mr. Hook has said, like, I guess when I'm balancing, you were kinda starting to touch on this, like, the school's responsibility in terms of, you know, trying to sort of mitigate the, the spread. It just feels like at least, you know, from what I'm reading and seeing that, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say the schools aren't, but it is so widespread and sort of that, you know, the efficacy of us taking action in terms of, you know, the ability to sort of to stop that within our school population. I'm torn, I don't know, you know, it doesn't seem to be that masking vaccination status. Any of that seems to affect the transmission of this. Certainly affects the outcomes in terms of sort of how people respond to any of that. I, I don't have to look very far to sort of find folks that have been vaccinated and boosted and have still managed to get this. And that's where I'm just, so I, I appreciate what you're saying. I'm, I'm struggling, I guess from where I'm sitting, if anything, I'd probably be more on the side of, you know, going completely remote or something along those lines, you know, as opposed to, to get us through sort of a wave as opposed to trying to sort of re-implement some aspects of things. I just, I'm not sure the efficacy of that, that I can still come back to. You know, we do those things that we do, I think that's gonna stop it spreading amongst our students, you know, because to Mr.'s point, if they're outside of our care, they got a lot of day left. And I'm not sure that everybody is sort of maybe taking, you know, all of the precautions that they ought to be. So those are some of the things I'm wrestling with. I would echo what you said, sort of commend everybody to this point, because all the hours and thought have gone into getting us to this point. But again, at least from where I'm sitting, you know, I'd probably be more on the side of doing something where we flipped over, maybe more virtual for a couple of weeks if we felt that, you know, we were, you know, at a point where we weren't able to keep the buildings open. So just, I, I'm not sure, just from my own experience and kind of seeing, seeing what the masks will get us, and I've read some of the same things in terms of the efficacy of the cloth masks against this particular variant. You know, and then you get issues with supplies, so I just think, I don't, and none of us, I don't think, you know, consider and say that we have the right answers, but at least for me, you know, that, that's probably where I would more lean as opposed to maybe going back to sort of implementing some sort of mask mandate.
I find it interesting that if we're, if we're exposed, you have to come back with masks on. So they're clearly stating that the masks are, they, they're saying that you're protecting from something, like Aaron was exposed and so he has, he was wearing mask anyhow, but he has to wear a mask for that 10 day period. So there, and there's recommendations, and I know there's recommendations from doctors that are saying, you don't, that masks don't make a difference, but there's plenty that are saying that it, it does help also. It reduces it.
But I think, and I, and I don't disagree with any of that. I would not be, I would not be supportive of it. Maybe kids need to be in school. I think you could find, as we've experienced in board, arguments on either side. What I see today, whether you're in Target or out in the community, you're seeing more people wear masks than they did two weeks ago. Three weeks ago. I mean, and you're seeing, hearing and seeing where people are getting vaccinated now where two weeks ago, they, they didn't appear to be interested. So I think there's a level of responsibility that's, that's, it's on all of us. And I don't think mandating anything from our perspective, we wouldn't be safe, but to turn them out, put them out there. And I don't, I don't think they're getting this in schools as much as they're getting it truthfully from their parents at home, who maybe are vaccinated, maybe they aren't vaccinated, but the thing, this thing is just taking, taking out of life of its own here in the last week. I don't think any of us have any answers for anybody, but. But I know a lot of, I've heard of doctors' offices telling their employees, if you're, you have a fever, if you have symptoms, stay home. If you don't have a fever and you don't feel that, and you don't feel bad, come to work. Don't get tested. So because by the time they get to some point, it's get tested, then their five days is interfered. So this, this complacency, confusing, conflicting, but I just, I just hope everything we all said and we read about, that this thing is like this, but it's gonna go here pretty quickly.
And just to clarify, I should have said, when I talk about sort of being more in favor of something, you know, like a remote option, I can certainly agree that our kids need to be in school. It's more from like an equity standpoint in terms of right now, when you're, because we don't have a remote option, you know, if you're at home, picking up things on the classroom versus if you're in the classroom, it's a different experience. My support for, I would probably rather go to something more like that for a shorter period of time to get through sort of the surge where it gives everybody sort of an equitable experience as opposed to closing it. That, that's where I'm coming from. I certainly agree that being in person is preferable and ideal. I'm just saying, I probably land more on the side of something along those lines that gives everybody the same experience as opposed to sort of having this sort of half in, half out approach where, you know, I think right now, because we don't have that model, it's a little trickier.
I can vouch to the fact that it's coming from home because with, and with the varsity weight room and, and what I'm doing, kids are getting COVID or they're being quarantined because their sister or their mom and dad brought it home or something like that, so. Like you mentioned, you know, it's, not that it's not being spread here, but it is, a lot of it is coming from outside the school system, so.
I mean, this is just for, this is my personal opinion, but when we did the mask mandate back in the beginning of this year, I personally agreed to it because that was our key to ensuring we didn't have massive quarantines. That basically got us back to the same spot where we had huge swaths of students and staff out because of nothing more than exposure, because of how the state defined that. But we've since gotten through that and credit where credit's due because of Mr. Hook and other Warren County superintendents. We now have a much more effective quarantine policy that allows kids to stay in school at this point. I, I just can't agree with the mask mandate at all. That's not where I'm at. Again, I'm one of five, so, but you know, we're past the quarantining issue and how, you know, masks play into that, so I'm no longer supporting that.
I think, oddly enough, I get that, but I have to say, we're not quarantining, but when we've got over 300 students out, just in the high school yesterday, that's a significant, significant number. So they're not out quarantining, but they're out sick, so.
Well, hypothetically, it should be one saying, correct? I mean, that was.
Well, I guess it could be quarantining, we're sick, but, but with the stay in, or whatever that thing is, that pilot thing, that should be putting them back in school a lot quicker, so we shouldn't be seeing these numbers like this.
No, that's not true. I mean, again, there's, school is a minority of number of hours in a day in a person's life, so again, there is tons of activity going on in the weekends and in the evenings and so on and so forth. So to, to put the onus on the school that if we would have had slapped masks on people, we wouldn't. slapped masks on people, we wouldn't have been in this position, it's a complete balancing act. And again, the fact that, that we now have a quarantine policy that I think is, is much more reasonable than where we were in July and August when Delta came up, I mean, I, again, I just don't see the need for it, I think, you know, parents in our community have been extremely vocal about what they believe their rights to parent are, and I think we need to respect that. Again, if, if we want to go down the path of reinstituting that, so be it, but let's give people due notice and allow them to, you know, tell the board what their feelings are. I, I think that's the least we can do, and I think that's something we learned as a board initiative, is always when we instituted it, so that's, that's all I'm saying.
I have nothing more to add.
Have to see how these five days off do, come back, hopefully it'll help, cross that bridge when we get there then.
If there's lots of comments.
We could do it after.
Just a little bit, just to, to, I think, especially to the nursing staff who has fielded all of these calls, I know that not every day calls back as quickly as would be normal, but I just kudos to them and thanking, so, so thankful for what they're doing and during confusing times because like Mr. Hook shared with all the changing guidelines and everything, so I'm just incredibly appreciative of them and just for all of the staff that have turned on a dime to support and do what's best for our kids and families and trying to keep it open as long as possible, so, I don't, it's not like I have an answer here, but I know since we are getting additional funds, I think I would so support anything that we could continue to do to help out, like last year when I had a number of students out, last year we at least had a Model B for the students that were out, so I think about the teachers that are juggling the kids that are out and the kids that are in, if there's anything that, that, that they were to come to us with that would help and financially that we needed to help support that with COVID, I would love to do that, just we cannot know what that would be, but I think that anything that we can do to help support staff getting through this, of helping those students, you know, when their classes are so broken up, because I've seen different parents putting out on social media, like their kids saying, this many out of this many students were in their kids' classes today, and my kid's going for the teachers, how do you teach to that? And continue to move your classes ahead and manage whose homework's turned in, who isn't, and it's just tough, so, I don't, I don't know what the answer would be on how to fix money, but we do have some COVID funds coming in, and hopefully we can figure out some ways to help support that. Last thing would just be to invite people to the MLK Day of Prayer in the center of town on Monday from twelve to twelve-thirty, it's put on by the group of pastors in town. They, last, last year was the first year they did it, and I heard last night that they're going to be doing it again, so just encourage everybody to attend, it was a really, really neat time to honor Dr. Margaret.
Is that down there, bicycle?
Yep, yep, right in the center of town at Wright Station.
Wright Station.
Wright Station.
Oh, not in the grass.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, but it's in the park, they actually do it in the parking lot, so like if you're at seventy-three and seven forty-one, you can see it in the park you want, where it used to be. That's all, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I already kind of shared a little bit, just in terms of, you know, the thoughts on what we're dealing with, and so just, you know, need to sort of rehash that, but just would sort of reiterate and build on what this is perhaps, so just extending, you know, my thanks to sort of all of our administrators and staff and teachers, just everybody that's been working so hard, dealing with a lot of uncertainty and changing guidelines, and we've dealt with some of that in our family as well, and sort of navigating some of the things that are, that are going on, and so I just, I just wanted to extend my appreciation for, for all of the hard work that is, that is going into helping to, to keep, you know, educating our kids under these extreme technical circumstances, so wanted to express my gratitude for, for all of that hard work.
Mr. Anderson, I would echo exactly what James said, teachers, administrators, everybody in education got into this business for a reason, for the most part, because they wanted to make a difference with young people, and nowhere along the line, if anybody asked them, so what, what are you going to do if you get COVID? I mean, it's just crazy, but I want to thank everybody who, everybody, from nurses to teachers, everything, who, who has dropped what they're doing and gone to help in other areas, and that, that is, that's the nature of these people, that's what they signed up for, they, they, it's, it's in their DNA in my opinion, and that's what they do, and still we probably don't recognize that enough, that it takes something major like this to perhaps bring it out, but a big thank you to everybody.
Yeah, I think, again, I'll be the fifth person to say it, thank you to staff, administration, faculty, I heard some anecdotes about people doing jobs they very likely did not sign up when they joined spring break, but they still did it, and, you know, I'd expect nothing less from anyone worse for us, I mean, time again, they've demonstrated even amongst other districts their willingness to go out and get the job done, to everyone's point. You know, I, I personally think every day, you know, the word in class in person, it's a big one for us, and we've just demonstrated a week and three days, you know, that, that accrues, you know, in terms of learnings for kids, so yeah, we're, we're taking time out because, quite frankly, the world appears to be sick right now, but hopefully those five days get us back to where we need to be, and if we need to take a couple more, so be it, and it's probably unrealistic to think that this is the very last time that we'll ever have to do something like this, but I think every time we do successfully do it, we learn something and we can apply it and make it better, so, you know, even though it, it feels like, oh, we've got to shut it down, and, you know, I, I don't view that as a failure, it's just we're reacting as quickly as possible, and we're trying to balance the needs of those that are out with the needs of those that are in, and our teachers that are working and faculty and staff that are working versus the parents that are at home and, you know, rely on us for many things, so it is a big balancing act, but I think we're doing a fantastic job, and I'm fine with us being very tactful right now, you know, we had it day-to-day, week-to-week, I'm okay with that, you know, anybody that tells you they know exactly what it's going to look like next week or the week after, I, I would question them, I think, because this is, you know, come quickly, but, you know, God willing, it's going to pass quickly too, so, but again, kudos to everyone, I mean, you guys are rock spiders sometimes here.
Let me add two quick things, just informational pieces, we are still doing testing, for those that are in the test-to-play mode, our nurse was providing to us from the Warren County Educational Service Center through monies that came from our county commissioners, so they're still going to be available at EduCare, so if there's, you're in that scenario, predominantly, it's probably an athlete, or you may be in a testing mode, she's still there on Monday and Tuesday, as of today.
Not Monday.
What did I say? Thursday, Friday. Yes, and I can see my days, hopefully, yes, Thursday and Friday, so she'll be there, she's been doing a wonderful job, she's got a bunch of people already scheduled, so that's still on, I just wanted to make sure of that, and if anybody still wants to sub, we can put you to work. Trust me, you just, you know, we'll, we'll get you busy, so we're, we're still looking for, for anybody that's interested, we're playing for training, if you're interested in bus driving, we need some floaters, so it's, it's a good, it's a good gig, and so we're always looking for EAs and others.
Mr. Anderson, you can do six train lines, do you?
Yeah.
I could.
It's really gross.
You know that backside, right? Thanks. I echo everything that was said up here, I want to thank Mr. Hook and his administration, and I think this was something that was really needed to, you know, when you had said originally maybe Friday, you know, obviously could Thursday also, and so that's what had transpired, you know, the, the staff, everybody's been great, I came in the front door and there were five people from the high school, and I didn't talk to them or, you know, anything along those lines, but you could see in their eyes that they were just, you know, they, they needed to get away and, you know, hopefully, you know, recharge their batteries, even though we just had a long Christmas vacation, so, you know, when, after these days are up, we'll take a look at it, I'm sure you will, you know, if there's stuff you think you need to do, bring it to us, you know, we'll go from there, it's all we can do. With that, I think that's the end, with that, need a motion to move into executive session in order to.
Sorry.
Consider the employer compensation of a public employer official.
Somewhere.